All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, if we can get a roll call, please.
Courtney Prabowski.
Present.
David Schmidt.
Present.
Ryan Mahan. Karysheski.
I'm present.
All right, and then, uh, those that are willing and able, please stand for the pardon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and then Ted, if we could get a virtue card reading when you're ready?
Today's virtue card is determination. You focus your energy and efforts on a task and stick with it until it's finished. Determination is using your willpower to do something when it isn't easy. You are determined to meet your goals even when it is hard or you are being tested. With determination, we make our dreams come true. You are practicing determination when you believe what you are doing is important. Set goals for yourself. Stay focused without being distracted. Keep going if it gets difficult. Ask for help when you need it. Finish what you start. Affirmation, I am determined. I set goals and keep going until I achieve them. I get things done. I stay focused on my purpose.
Thank you, Pat. Board of Education Guidelines, with an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results and high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate success in academics, arts, and athletics. Public comments. During the public comment period of the agenda, the board welcomes comments from any district resident, not a member of the board, on any item not on the agenda. Please know the pursuance to state the law, board. The law of the board cannot engage in conversation with you but may ask questions. The board may refer the item to staff, a standing committee, or a future agenda for discussion and action. Each person wishing to speak will have up to three minutes to talk. Speakers are asked to provide their name, address, and topic for discussion. Uh, so that, with that, we have any public comments in-house tonight? Amy?
Yeah, I just have a quick one. Um, I guess I would like to know what is the plan to honor this year's seniors? As opposed, I mean, last year was all fanfare for their little quarter of a year that they lost. This year is crap for seniors.
Okay.
So I guess I would like to know what is going to be done to celebrate them even more so than last year. Like, these seniors have given off way more than seniors did last year.
Okay, yeah, and I agree. I will, I will follow up with you or Terry and I will, um, I would like to know myself. I know it'll be, it'll be better than last year for sure, so, uh, I just, I wanna give you that, uh, but I will, I don't know the answer to that yet, but I can guarantee it'll be better than last year, so we'll follow up, um, and then we'll reach out, he'll give you a call or, um, shoot you an email to let you know what the plans are. I don't know if there are any committees or subcommittees right now working on it, but, um, we'll, we'll get that rolling. So I know that they're working on prom as well, so, which is good.
Can I just bring a suggestion, like the yard signs? Those are great. Why don't we, why have we not been doing those every year?
Okay.
Like, do we not wanna celebrate our seniors every single year, not just in the middle of the pandemic?
Sure.
It's nice to see where our seniors are throughout the community. That was great.
Yeah, I think we all, I think we all can agree on that, so, thank you. And then, um, do we have anybody, um, on the web that, in the inbox comments that has someone that wanna speak? I guess we just have three people on, huh?
I don't see anything in the chat.
Okay, and then anybody else in-house? Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody. And then, I guess back to Amy again for a CWSA update.
Yep, um, so during the meeting yesterday, um, Mr. Bartling is working out pretty well. He had a little bumps and stuff along the way, but it's only been a month, so, um, according to some of the parents that are in our group, it's been going well. He's been working pretty well with Chris. The kids really are enjoying him. They like that he will, um, interact with them, like, like floor hockey was one thing that had been brought up a couple times, and he, you know, interacts with them not in the classroom, so that's always really good, too. One thing that they wanna bring up is that they have, a couple of the students have done a weather balloon, and they will be launching it sometime in the near future. And I guess it can go up to like 200 miles is what it was.
Wow, that's cool.
So that is a really cool project that we'll be working on, and I'm sure we'll post it somewhere, they'll have some stuff on it. And, um, Nathan said he's still working on the video for Mr. Bartling, so, like, the introduction with their questions and stuff, so hopefully we'll have that soon. Otherwise, it is going well. I just wanna also kinda put out there again for anybody that we are still looking for a couple more council members, um, myself, and then, uh, Richard Brain will be stepping down in May. So, um, and if you know anyone, we could use, um, like, another, um, community member, business members, anything like that, that's interested in helping us on the council, we could really use some extra help. We're gonna send out, um, to the fifth grade parents and kinda send something out to them saying, you know, if they have any incoming students that we could use somewhere.
Awesome, thank you. I look forward to seeing what kind of data or just seeing some information on that weather balloon that seems cool, too.
Amy, do you know when they're, they're launching that? Is that in?
I'm not sure.
You're before spring break, you don't know that?
I don't know. It was, um, Logan Milhorne for sure, and naturally other students, there was two students that were involved in it, um, but I am not sure. They said in the very near future, so.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Amy. We're headed on over to communicating with the board. Uh, Nathan Swenson is, oh, he is over in-house tonight. How's it going today, Nathan?
Well, how are you?
Good. What do you got for us?
We had a few big-ticket things happen a couple weeks ago. Two weeks from tomorrow, on the third, Student Council on SCLA after blood drive here. Some of you might have went to that. Think at the end of the day, went really well. They ended up with 42 or so units of blood for the Red Cross. So that went well. Nobody passed out or anything. Went well. Couple days after that, on the sixth, National Honor Society had their chili for charity. That went extremely well, probably like 100 or so bowls and cords of chili. Made some good proceeds there to donate to Feeding America. Besides that, those were two really big things. We're getting towards the end of the quarter, two weeks here and, and the quarter three, and, uh, Student Council on a smaller basis is looking to put some cups up in the office for students to get a drink during the day, and just doing some spring break activities for the next week, and sidewalk chalk contest in a couple weeks in April. And, uh, prom, as you had mentioned, that we start planning tomorrow. Couple students are gonna be with Mrs. Harnish here at noon to start planning that, figuring out the details, and besides that, all is going well, so.
Awesome. I was gonna ask with, um, the prom planning in Joan, will Joan be working on celebrating the senior success, too? Do you know at all, Terry?
I haven't, I haven't. I don't, I'll have to check into that.
Okay.
Have you heard anything?
I haven't.
Hey, Nathan, didn't you say something at our Thursday meeting about the Red Cross wanting to do these blood drives more often?
Yep, they did one here in March, and they were looking at doing one in March, and we spring, and then in the fall, around October, and then they talked about doing a smaller summer one sometime in probably July.
Awesome, okay. All right, thank you, Nathan. Brian Grill, we're gonna head over to the Director of Student Services.
All right, I have two updates for you, but I have to move on out of both of them. This Friday is our new campus staff, um, COVID-19 vaccine drive. So that's really exciting that we're working with Wood County, that we have that all set up for our staff who are interested, can come in and get shots. So far, we have 118 staff signed up. It's gonna be a busy day. Um, we have a lot of our staff helping out with registration, as well as Cody's coming in to help administer shots, so we are thanking everyone from county to staff to making that event occur. It's gonna be a busy day. The drive is going from 11 to 5, but it'll be a full day and an exciting day for our staff. So, that's update one. Um, the other one I have for you, so as you know, with student services, we did have some new staff join our team this year. We do have now a district social worker on staff, and Paul Liepar, um, joined, I guess, the student services team. He's always been part of our district, but he became a part of student services. And what we did over, um, that semester, we did what's called a theory of change, to really talk about what student services and what's our vision as a district, to help us define our roles and our goals and what falls into student services. So at the top, you can see, this is just a handout for you to look over, this is what we're about. You know, the school district of Nacusa Student Services Department cultivates opportunities for all students, staff, and families to achieve holistic success. And I know there's been conversations and questions about how does school counseling, social work, my role of school psychologist, and Paul's role, to work around mental health, to work about around providing services for students beyond the school building. This outlines the work that we are doing. So that way, you can see how we're engaging families, collaborating with the community, the work we're doing within each of the schools to help build systems. And then, even on our side, how are we building roles and responsibilities so staff know, when do I go to the school social worker versus the school counselor? And then, to even classroom environments of how are we providing training and helping teachers know, here's a strategy I could try, my C is doing, having some difficulties? So we started this, this is a living and breathing document that we're gonna be reviewing twice a year to really say how far we got, not just where we at. And as you see, it's color-coded, uh, red is something we need to work on right now, that's something really important to us. Green is something that we've already started, and black can sometimes mean either A, we haven't started yet, or black is K, we already did that work, it's just at a maintaining level that's already in place. So this just helps us to really start to define what student services does and what it looks like in Nacusa. So I just wanted to share that with you, but as you look over, if you have any questions, please feel free to email me, call me, or if you have any additional questions.
I just have a quick one right now. All right, is, um, so did Paul's role change to the district social worker, or is, or are we, here's you working with the district social worker?
He's working with, so our district social worker is Bailey Wyszuski.
Okay.
And then Paul is still our community, I always forget the formal title, it's Community Outreach Liaison.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
Any questions? All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
We're gonna head over to our business manager, Lynn Knight. Good evening, Lynn, how's it going?
Very good, how are you guys?
We're great.
So, um, I don't, I just have one small, well, I was gonna say small update, but it's really pretty big. Um, on March 11th, President Biden signed into law the Americans Rescue Plan Act, which means that the, uh, state of Wisconsin will be receiving $1.4 billion in, uh, SRS3 monies. DBI is currently working on allocation of all of the school districts across the state, and they should be releasing the numbers shortly as to how much each district will be, will be receiving. The good news is, is that, um, how we are allowed to spend it is very, very broad. So that means that we have a lot of flexibility in order to manage our school districts by, uh, fiscal, um, efficiency, which is pretty amazing for a federal, um, federal bailout, I guess. So more will be coming, I did wanna give you a heads up on that. I will also be sending you a board update later this week.
Okay, awesome, it's good news hearing about that, so. Any questions for Lynn, you guys?
Is it, uh, you said it's broad, is that something that we can use maybe for our athletic program or no?
Um, not that broad.
Okay. Uh, before we end, uh, communicating with the board, I wanted, uh, Pat touched base quick, he met up with the parent group and he wanted to share his updates. There'd been some communications and some meetings via Zoom, uh, so Pat was willing to, um, go to that meeting in person and update us, so just looking for a little brief update there.
Well, actually, it wasn't so much that I met in person, I mean, I was there, but I mean, uh.
You were invited.
I was invited, and it was, it was, but, but five teachers, I think, were there, and two parents from a group of about 75 people, they represented about 75 people, and, and then Terry was there and Keith was there, and I came away from it with the thought that, you know what, a lot of positive things came out of that meeting. I did not sit in on the Zoom meeting that was prior to that, but I had heard that that got a little, little heated, and, but this was, this was like the two sides coming together and, you know, talking it out, fleshing it out, and, and seeing what could work and why couldn't, you know, the, the, a lot of the parents' questions were answered as to why certain things could not be done. And the teachers gave them the main advice was to go to your, you know, for your student to speak to you, the advisor of their, of their cohort group, and, and that was where the parents were to go to first, not to the teacher, not to like the math teacher or the chem, chemistry teacher or whatever, but go to the advisor and let the advisor become a liaison or an advocate for the student. And so that, to me, it, it, it made a lot of sense, because right now, with the way things are, the advisor is the one that is becoming the advocate and, and, uh, for that student and for that, that whole group of students that they're advising. And I just came out of that whole meeting with, okay, this is, this is good, we're, we're moving in a positive direction, and there wasn't a whole lot of negativity, uh, coming out of that that I could see. A lot of questions were answered. I do believe the parents that represented, uh, that, that group came away, I thought, with the same feeling, but, I mean, I can't speak for them, obviously, but anyways, that's, that's how I felt about it.
Great, thank you, Pat, and thank you to that, uh, parent group, it's good to hear that, um, healthy things came about and healthier things are happening.
And that they're concerned, it's good to know that parents are concerned, one way, you know, one way or the other.
We're gonna jump into, uh, policy governance now, our three self-directed thinkers. Terry, do you wanna read the definition for me?
Absolutely, so our three self-directed thinkers, all students are creative, self-directed thinkers, prepared for and able to adapt to a changing world. And so the policy further talks about our students will be able to use information from a variety of sources to solve problems and make independent decisions. Our students will set priorities and goals, assess personal progress, and make appropriate judgments. Our students will plan and prepare for challenging careers based on personal interests and strengths. And finally, our students will demonstrate resilience and patience with the ability to cope with adversity.
Yeah, so, uh, during our board workshop last week, we got to hear from, uh, the principals on, um, some pros and a little bit of things that are working on. I'll share a few that I, that I learned, um, some takeaways, and I'll have, um, the, the two that are here tonight to kinda share a couple. For the high school, Keith talked about how we're one of the few schools that offer the AP courses and, um, that we're working on reducing the narrative and stigma, um, for how a smaller school isn't offering all these advanced credits, but, but we are, so he's kinda working on that, but that's something hard to do as well, so. For the middle school, I learned that they're trying to increase their resources with School G, uh, students have a variety of options to choose from, um, so it's making a positive effort on those resources and kind of making their brain think a little bit more when it's things that they enjoy. And then from the high school, I learned, um, they're helping kids get fully engaged by, with adding bridges, and, um, from, from Brian and, uh, John Sprain here, they're working on the IEPs and helping those students become more independent, so if John or, uh, Mr. Black wants to, to go out and bring those ideas and chime in, that'd be great.
If you actually want to summarize to me, I'd welcome any questions, but I think that's a great summary of your points.
Okay, all right.
Nathan, did you wanna share anything?
Yes, so, again, uh, it's asked to give sort of a glow and a grow, or, uh, kind of things we're working on, specifically, I still find that, that most years, when you, uh, make a change to be going to one-to-one, everyone has a computer in front of them, that's not, uh, just a straightforward process. You know, there's some great possibilities to create, create more self-directed thinkers, you know, have more resources, how to maximize the opportunity for different students to learn at different paces. And so, you know, some things that I'm finding that I wouldn't get, if you would have pointed this out to me last March, um, let's say March 12th instead of March 13th, and saying at this time next year, that we're going to be able to have people to learn online, um, from one day to the next, and deliver content to them, and have them interact and keep their schooling going, I would've said, wow, what did you do? And we don't want the answer to how that turned out, but they're, we're able to have a lot more flexibility. Teachers are able to put resources in School G, students, different, students can learn at different paces. Now, that's a possibility, but also the challenge is, we haven't fully realized that. Um, that's not, it's something we're still learning how to do. We're all doing it, but to a level that is, this is a way that is, it's not a consistent way of doing it in all areas, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, we're able to enable students to learn at a more individual way while still teaching face-to-face, and is learning some great stuff and coming with some great challenges, how to get better at it, so, you know, it's, the, well, pluses and minuses are on the same point, depending on how you flip it, but it's a very productive way to be pushing forward, too, that I see will continue to get better and better year over year.
Awesome.
Can I ask a quick question, Nathan? Uh, from last year, one of the areas have improved, and I know this has been hard with COVID, but one of the, the points, uh, to improve was strengthen, build the bridge between AMS and Nacusa High School in planning and preparing students for the academic and career planning based on personal interests and strengths. Can you just, I think we need to keep that on a, on there as a, an area to grow, but Nathan, can you just give a, a taste to the board of where we are with that with the onset of a, a new, uh, council or any AMF?
Well, and to that point, I'd, I'd say that that is an area to grow, but with the new counselor, as we're going in, um, that hasn't been the, of the 10 things I want him to work, that we have to, you have to choke up on a bat in a new situation, especially when you, um, hire somebody in the middle of the year. And so, all the things we have made connections of, making plans for him to come up and visit, learn the type of things the high school is doing, um, we pretty much, the high school is among the leading high schools in the area for what they're doing as far as ACP, academic and career progress, and what we had been doing at the middle school in the past was more of a canned program, whereas our plan is to, as, um, Mr. Murray is able to spend now some time or at the high school, and this will be starting up next year, really in earnest, is really backfill, making sure we have a, an extension and a buildup so that they can hit the ground running even faster at the high school, is our vision. How much are we able to realize that vision is limited due to personnel changes as well as the pandemic, about, that moving students, you know, in future years, we have to, our hope is to get students at the high school more often than we can. So we have areas of growth that are lined out, but, uh, due to the nature of this year, a lot of that, those plans are still mostly in favor.
Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you, guys. Any questions for, for those here tonight?
So we keep those two areas for improvement?
Yeah, yeah. And I'll, I'll talk to, or do you wanna talk with Keith just to see what area he, he wants to improve on?
Yeah.
Since he wasn't. Uh, so at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve, uh, policy governance, our three self-directed thinkers.
Hold on, a second.
The first and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, motion carried. All right, GP 11, board member violations, uh, we spoke briefly about this last week. We didn't, uh, see any violations or have any concerns, um, from this point moving forward, uh, so I'm just looking for a, a motion to approve here unless someone has a comment.
Second.
Got first and a second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carried. Other board work tonight, we're, uh, we're back to Lynn Knight on the compensation committee update on the new model.
Now I'm gonna turn it over to Alfred.
All right, just, he's making his way up here.
Well, uh, give, uh, teachers and preachers a stage, and sometimes you don't know when to get off, right, Pat?
It's right.
But I'll try to stick to my notes. So I sent this email out to, uh, the, the teaching staff earlier today, um, here was my message. Board meeting tonight, I've been asked to give a compensation package update, my message follows, give me something, thumbs up, got it, sounds good, positive, if you're good with me bringing this message in here behalf, give me something else if you're not, I plan on stating I'm here on behalf of Nacusa teachers, and I can't ethically do that without some sort of a charge. So, and a general email, when you get responses back, it's always kind of exciting because, uh, I don't know how many emails you get in a day, but we get a bunch. So I think at last count, I have 44 respondents, and they were all very positive and encouraging on the message, so I'll try to, try to stick to my notes. But before I do that, uh, a thing that I included in the email to the teachers was about Brian Geezy, so I'd just like to read, read this about Brian Geezy. On behalf of Nacusa teachers, we mourn his passing. Brian was an ardent supporter of Nacusa teachers. His positivity, appreciation, and involvement in public education in Nacusa has no parallel. By those of us who knew him, he will be long remembered and missed, so that message, wanted that to come to the board, um, on behalf of, on behalf of Nacusa teachers. Regarding the compensation plan, um, I would come to you first with the no news is good news, um, there have not been any problematic issues reported by the teaching staff. I didn't ask them today, how are you feeling about it? Um, I just, I just said, these are the things that I'm going to put out there, but I got an overwhelming number of messages back anyway, saying, thank the board, um, on behalf of the teachers, thank the community that supported the referendum that allowed us, um, to, to do what we did, uh, really an amazing thing, and, and we're still kind of relishing in what was able to be accomplished and supported by you. Another one of my notes that I went out to the teachers was, this is a weird year, so personal professional development pursuit has gone back burner to many. Expect an increased interest level next fall of collection of PD units, national board certification, and the pursuit of teachers and master's degrees. To that, I did get back, um, one person responded back to me and said, it has encouraged me to pursue my master's degree, um, he knew of a couple others, and he said, others I know of are pursuing those things now more ardently than they would have, um, prior to this, even in this weird year, and it has, it has been a weird year. Uh, another note that I put out there, uh, we have been asked by another district to share the plan that we came up with and that you supported, we did so willingly, proudly. Um, and I would, I would say too, and I don't know if I said this at the last update or not, but when we presented, uh, the final package for approval, and Brian, I will always remember this, because I was embarrassed at, at my personal lack of forethought in the preparation of a final product and package and package to sit in front of you and say, this is it, and Brian, I know you asked for that, and right when you said that, I'm like, oh, man, how could we not have something that was in truly final form? That has been done now, um, with, with Diana's help, um, and I don't know if that's come in front of you yet, um, but that is something that's done, and we did share that, it was the Amper School District that asked, um, to see what we had come up with, and so, so that was, that was shared with them as well. Also, that next year, um, the next contract year, 2021, 22, um, there will be no additional money. Also, that next year, um, the next contract year, 2021, 22, um, there will be no additional money added to the plan. Teachers will move within the existing plan. However, that 25%, um, that wasn't added originally, because it was broken into a two-part implementation, that 25% will go into this year's plan, so there will be increased noted, just making that plan whole. Um, and then, in the year 2022, 23, adjustments will be made to the plan based on the state's biennial budget. And so just put that note out to the teachers to remind them, um, that, that that's where we're at with that plan. So, like I said, all of that, that good news, um, nothing really new to add as far as the compensation model and, and input from the, input from the teachers goes, unless you have any questions regarding that.
I don't think so, it's a, it's a great plan, and we're glad, we're all glad that we were able to,
Be a part.
To be a part of it and get a role in here, so the teachers sound like they're excited and motivated as well, which is.
And, and I will be very interested, as I'm sure you will be too, as to how movement from teachers within the school district to other places happens next year. Um, and, and honestly, I can say I have not heard any grumbling, and that's, that's perhaps the wrong word, but any, any people indicating that they're looking other places because of increased compensation. Um, and that, that was one of our, our primary goals for sure. Maybe a couple other things, while I have the stage and I haven't stepped off yet. Just thinking about teachers and, and, uh, you know, the role in the district and all of that, and I put this out there to the staff as well, telling them that, that I would share this with their blessing. In, in the past, we had union leadership among teachers, um, and that's how compensation packages were, were developed and, and discussed and agreed upon with the board. You know, we evolved out of that and came up with something very unique and good. Now, there were other things too, that, that teacher union, um, things allowed us to do as far as communication with the board, um, and administration, and, and now we're in a, a different sort of place there too, and we've really kind of lost some of those things. So, to the teaching staff, I put out questions about, um, Nacusa teacher leadership structure. In the past, union structure, um, we elected administrative positions, committees. Currently, there is no formal leadership structure for Nacusa teachers, so the question was, how do we evolve with that? I put that out there to them, I put that out there to you. Um, communication with the administration and Board of Education. Um, it used to be that the, the, uh, the district administrator would meet regularly with the, the union president, the NTA president. Since we're no longer functioning under that, we've lost that method of communication. Not that Terry isn't perfectly accessible, he is, but, but it did allow us something a little more formal than, than we have now. Board of Education, um, would meet with union leadership regarding, um, compensation packages, so there was that piece that we're now missing, and the Board of Education also had listening sessions along the way too. So just looking forward, um, because I think it's really important that teachers have some method, some vehicle for communication with the board. And, uh, that's just something that's on my radar, thinking ahead of, of how can we continue to grow and improve, um, knowing that communication is a big deal. I don't have any answers, it's just those are things that I would like to pursue and perhaps ask you to think about in the future as well.
Kind of, we, in the past, we, we talked about listening sessions, um, so that might be something that we can, um, talk about in a, in a future workshop to see how we can kind of fit that in with all of you guys, so.
Yeah, you get feedback from teachers on that topic, yeah?
Oh, yeah, I, I absolutely will. And another thing that maybe I would suggest as a starting off point, um, if, if this next coming school year is somewhat normal or back to normal, um, it used to be that we would have whole staff meetings in, in the commons, or not in the commons, in the auditorium here, and usually, um, there, there would be a time where we as teachers could conduct some business on an in-service day when all of the staff were together too. And so maybe if that can happen again in a normal sort of a way this coming fall, maybe that's somewhere where teachers can have an opportunity to talk together and pursue those things as well. And obviously, I'm really happy to work with, with anyone who's interested in, in that too. Thank you for your time, unless you have any questions regarding that?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, so I'm gonna go over the 2021, uh, 22 CISA contract. Uh, before I get to the details, uh, I was talking to Dave just before the meeting. Uh, we need to appoint, um, a specific person at our next workshop, I was thinking, uh, and that meeting is May 13th.
We talked a little bit about that topic, and they're gonna send us that information for our April meeting.
Okay.
So we'll make sure it's at the April meeting.
So you want me to go there with the motion or wait till April?
I'd wait till April. So we got the official word, is that okay with Dave, with you?
Definitely.
Oh, we don't need to do this?
Yeah, so, uh, right now, we're just gonna skip over, um, the CISA contract, we'll have more information about the actual contract come April.
No, no, the contract we wanna do.
Oh, we wanna go.
But as far as Dave being a delegate, you had the conventional meeting.
Okay. All right, uh, so for the 2021, 22 CISA contract seeking approval? Looking for.
Oh, you're looking for a motion?
Looking for a motion.
So, uh, second.
Uh, first and a second, all in favor?
All right.
I, all right, motion carried. So to clarify, uh, we approved the contract, we will go, um, over the more details in appointing a person to go to that May 13th meeting, so, thank you.
Did Lynn, Lynn, did you wanna weigh in on any, anything within this CISA contract?
No, it's pretty standard, we do this every year, so it's, it's okay.
Thank you.
Heading over to the Start College Now program, uh, we had a student, uh, that I approved earlier, um, just looking for a motion to, uh, push that forward.
Hold on.
Got a first and a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried for the Start College Now program. We're heading over to John Spring for a transportation alternative grant work, information only.
Thanks, Goldie, help me breathe. Um, for those who didn't know, we, I shared a, a link highlighting work that a, myself and a group of other citizens are working on regarding trails in Nacusa, what that looks like, and that's a big overview of everything. One of the things, uh, within that group that, uh, is a member of that group, myself and another individual, Rick Schmidt, who works for the city, we are just, we saw the opportunity to produce, pursue something called the Transportation Alternative Grants, we are looking at other grants too. And the purpose of this grant is to really take advantage of the fact that we're doing work with our athletic infrastructure and working towards creating a pathway from the, what will be the stadium over to the middle school, and we're looking just through some grand dollars to extend that path even longer, so it really stretches across, um, our whole school district to provide really a pathway that's a multipurpose pathway, by definition, that is just something wider than your average sidewalk, just to provide ease of access for our students across all our properties. It's a grant, there's no promise it's gonna happen, but at this point, my purpose in sharing that is just to provide you with information so you could ask questions and just make it known that it's something that we're looking to partnership with the city and exploring the idea.
I, I watched the, I watched the video and it was really well done, I didn't even know there was a third, I didn't know there was a third, um, path, um, up towards the top, I just knew that there were just two of them, so it was really cool to see Anita Kirst and the Petersons and you in there and, uh, the city talking about all the exciting work that can be done, so, um, I hope, I hope that that grant, um, gets pushed through, if not, um, hopefully the board or the district can find a way to help support to make that happen too, so. I don't know if anybody else got to watch the video on the board update?
I did, it was in the update though, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's in the update, yeah.
So I'll put it, I'll put it out there again.
Okay.
And that, all, all this comes from that study we did a few, was it a year ago, the Safe Route to School?
Yeah, yeah, and so that's when I'm sitting here, listening to this person, and I'm thinking, hey.
Let's take advantage of this.
There's an opportunity for us to do something a little bit more extensive, to provide a resource, and it's really, that's one of the, you know, the goals of doing the grant, is to provide a safe route to school, um, to promote, you know, really the hope of education and fitness and, and really opportunities for kids to learn.
When do you guys anticipate to hear back from?
Well, good question, the grant, it, you have to, um, have, have it submitted by January of 2022, I guess.
So, or how do they?
And then, yeah, and so it's kind of like, it takes a while to get there, to get all your, just like, like anything with construction, you have to be well organized, and then we wait here, and then, and so it's, it's still more than a year out, it'll be accepted.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Uh, summary of approving athletic study from board workshop on March 11th. Uh, so last week, the board got together and talked about our, uh, mission and vision for athletics here at the district. Um, we're also working on a, the board's working on operational expectations. We also went through a base of action steps, um, that Paul Han and, um, John Thomas went through, our athletic directors, to kind of help with the base program. Um, there's a committee that was put together of about 12 to 15, I believe, to put this baseline together. Uh, we discussed most of the topics and went through, uh, those 10 to 15 topics, and then they're gonna be working on, um, filtering those out to kind of make it better, so. I didn't know if, if Terry, you wanted to?
Well, all I'd say is, I started working on the update for this week, so I, I've taken those action steps, and I'm gonna meet with Paul and John this week, and we're gonna start putting some, you know, uh, responsible people together to make sure those action steps happen. With the whole idea, if we do all those action steps, um, you know, we're gonna get close to that vision. So we've got, I know the softball, baseball, T-ball group has been working hard. We're sending out soccer invites for the young kids for soccer, and we've got a little basketball skills camp going on down at Humke. So the goal is to really, you know, and we talked about it last week, we need about 60 kids at the elementary to end up with 30 up here at the high school. So we gotta really work hard on putting the infrastructure in place to have 60-plus kids there and, you know, a good 30 up here, so I think that, I'm, I'm excited, I think that, that went well, the meeting last week. Uh, we were still talking about it at the admin meeting this morning, so. We gotta get some good traction on that.
Any comments? All right, um, consent agenda employment, Rachel France, uh, high school head cross-country coach. Pat, do you wanna read the donations for?
Sure. Um, donations, $500, Paige Clark and family to AMS wrestling program. $500 Nacusa Lions Club to Nacusa youth athletics for batting cages. Backpack for kids, David and Ian Lepec, $300. $215 for Bethland Women's Mission, $75 for Rome Ham Homemakers. The Athletic Complex. $2,000, $2,500 Jim and Dunhead Crutchmire family. $20 Robert Lundquist. $25,000 Highland family, Pam and Dick and parents of Heller and Hollery, Heather, Holly, Hillary and Kirk. $1,000 Fatheads Rapids RV. Um, wow, thank you, thank you very, very much for those generous donations.
All right. Uh, I'm gonna be calling for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Hold on.
Got a first and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Future agenda items, April 20th will be our regular, uh, board meeting. Uh, going over GP 5 board officers and GP 12, uh, board member responsibility. Also going over the course description book for the high school, and then preliminary non-renewals. Unless there are any other, uh, comments or topics for tonight, I'm just gonna reach for the motion to adjourn tonight. Yeah, first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you to everyone showing up tonight and on the web.